Thank you.
Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of September 20th, 2018. We're actually reconvening the meeting. We met in executive session. The meeting is being recorded and broadcast by WCTV and also an audio recording is being made by Mrs. Ruiz. So if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
May I tell the defense to comply of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, on the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone who'd like to address the committee? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to good news. Does anyone have any good news they'd like to share? Go ahead.
Yesterday, I attended the field hockey game and they were awarded by MIAA, the Educational Athletic Achievement Award. They received this award for participating in outstanding community service. How this was chosen, when our athletic teams tweet or place something on Facebook, MIAA follows our different teams and when they see a noteworthy project, then it attaches to the pillars, then they will come and award the team a certificate and their picture's been tweeted out and it's quite a very nice accomplishment. We're very proud of our field hockey girls for their community service.
Thank you. I just had a couple of things to share, having to do with the new elementary school project. We have scheduled two community forums that will be held, hoping anyone with questions, concerns, any information that they'd like. The first one will be on October 13th at 10:00 a.m. in the Wareham Free Library and the second one will be on October 15th at 6:00 p.m. in the middle school auditorium. So everyone is welcome to either of those public forums. And also, a couple of meetings ago, a few meetings ago, we talked about nomination for a longtime school committee member, Jeff Swett, to the lifetime membership with the Mass Association of School Committees. And I'm happy to say that his nomination was accepted and he will become a lifetime member and that award ceremony will be in November during their conference. So I just want to say congratulations to Jeff Swett on that award. Okay, we'll move on to the minutes of the meeting from September 6th, 2018. Does anyone have any questions or changes to be made to those minutes? No? Okay, could I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero zero. The next item on the agenda is a request for the senior prom for the class of 2019. Good evening.
Good evening, school committee. My name is Ethan Osley and I am the secretary for the class of 2019.
And I'm Edna Logue, I'm a co-advisor for the class of 2019.
Thanks for coming. Welcome.
Thank you. So the class of 2019 respectfully requests the approval of the following date and place for the senior prom. It is going to be located at Rachel's Lakeside in Dartmouth, Massachusetts and it'll be going from 6:00 to 11:00 p.m. And the date is Saturday, May 18th, 2019. And ticket prices will go for around $65.
Does anyone have any questions?
How much did you figure for last year?
Around the same price, yeah.
Sixty-five to seventy dollars, yeah, on a yearly basis.
How long is the drive to the venue?
It's about 25 minutes, two and a half hour.
So you ask about the ticket prices. There is fundraising. Students are still able to fundraise and earn money towards the purchase of those tickets. Is that true?
Well, yes, of course, yes.
Okay.
Will there be marketing or just different things like that to make sure all students know that there's ways to raise money for it in the event that they cannot afford the cost of the $65?
There are usually advisory meetings that we speak in front of the whole entire class, let them know what's going on.
Okay.
So at the, whenever the next advisory meeting is, that is when we'll let everyone know to start getting ready for ticket prices, start putting money aside for it, I mean.
Okay.
What's included in the ticket price?
All right, so a ticket price would include the buffet-style menu, which is being chosen, but Rachel's offers a wide variety of different options for that. So we're just making sure that we get the okay from the kids and we'll go forward with whatever they choose. It is, there'll be a photo booth, things like photo booths, DJs, decorations, everything will be covered at ticket price. And obviously, the price of the ticket will cover all those things, including the cost of the venue itself, so.
Okay. And it's not Memorial Day weekend, so that's good planning. And I did look a little bit, it's not SAT day, so it doesn't conflict with any of those dates, so that's good. Okay, great.
When do you plan on starting to sell tickets?
Well, it's a good question. I guess we'd start right away with getting, making sure they have the ticket price out there and then, I mean, as soon as possible, once we have everything approved and obviously go forward from there, we'd like to get tickets selling, you know, as soon as possible, so in the next coming months, that way everyone's prepared for the event.
Okay. Any questions?
Do you guys know anything about how last year there was like a closet full of like prom dresses for people who didn't, like couldn't afford it?
Um, we did.
Is that still going on?
Is that through Deca? Is that through Deca?
Yeah.
School store?
Yep.
So obviously, there's options for the prom dresses. We love to look back into that possibility. Obviously, it helps out any of our kids that don't have the funds to afford a dress. It's a great idea and I'm sure that going forward, we would absolutely look into that.
Is there a way to get that out there for?
Yeah.
Closets full of stuff?
Yeah, I think it'll be something we'll maybe put up on social media if anybody wants to donate. We could also go to the local thrift stores and ask if they would, if they would like to donate anything. And I think it went, it went pretty well last year. I believe that it was used pretty frequently by, you know, a wide variety of girls that went to the prom, so.
As secretary of the class, when you know more dates about things like this, like drop-off times and things like that for an event like this, would you be willing to maybe come back at one of these meetings so that we can make sure the public knows about it at that time to make sure students and, you know, just the community is aware to try to get them more involved?
Yeah, of course, yeah.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve their request?
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero zero.
I just want to say thank you. You presented that quite eloquently.
Thank you. And have a good evening, school committee.
Thank you.
I think I'm too young.
Oh, okay. The next item on the agenda is the update on the elementary building project and for that, Dr. Schwam will provide that tonight.
Good evening, everyone. I just thought that it would be important to talk about the requirements of the education plan that was started, I want to say, two years ago. We started to write this plan. The MSBA asks for a comprehensive educational program to help inform school designs that are responsive to current teaching and learning practices while providing flexibility to accommodate future changes in learning environments and educational delivery methods during the useful life of a school facility. They take that very seriously through this plan, just so that everyone is aware, the way that they choose the space and the way that they allow, how they allow a certain, a certain size versus not a certain size. They take that all very seriously and look at the projected enrollment. I know there's been some questions about that, but the ed plan really addresses some of those areas of concern and they work really hard to make sure that we're preparing for the future. The Warehams education plan was informed by our strategic plan, WPS 2021, as well as the various practices we have currently established. Joan and Bethany, Joan Siemens and Bethany Chandler, principals of Minnet and Deccus, began writing the plan and they used an exemplar of another district's education plan that had been approved that the MSBA provides. From there, we began visioning sessions and Joan, Bethany and I, with Dr. Shaverhood's support and approval, worked on this plan together to prepare it for the MSBA submission. The final plan consisted of approximately 30 pages, not including attachments. And due to the hard work of all involved, we were able to design the building according to educational needs, not design the education around the building. And the education plan represents the voice of many stakeholders in Wareham. Wareham currently has consistent processes in place to support school and district improvements and are realizing this vision. These were articulated in the education plan submitted to MSBA. We did not create any new positions in the plan or within the new school and based on our design, on how what we currently do can be delivered in a space free of obstacles, making more time for quality services to our students. We were visionary, but also conservative. We considered our children and the community in the visioning sessions and during the design process. So although we were designing a school, we thought of everyone in our visioning sessions. There were many, many people who were there during that time and the plan represents all of that. Any questions?
I don't have a question. I just wanted to say that I think it's important to talk about the education plan because a lot of times we talk about the building and rooms and, you know, the actual building and I think it's important to go step back and remember that the building was, is being designed around the educational plan.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, so I just think it's really important. And also, that education plan is available online on the new school website, if I'm not mistaken, if anyone wanted to take a look at it. Thank you.
It's a great read.
Yeah. Does anyone have any questions?
I like that you mentioned that, you know, like Joyce said, that you were really focusing on the education and all the people that would be involved in the school and the different options for instructing and mentoring based upon age and, you know, all these different options. I like that you also said that, you know, it was done conservatively. I think the community hears, you know, the cost of a school and they think that, you know, we're spending high dollar for, you know, the most expensive things, but we really, I, from reading this, I'm just really impressed with how much every single piece and detail was focused on education and the basic needs that we've been living without in a lot of our classrooms for a long time. So thank you.
I would add that the educational plan also has to meet the Department of Education standards, so once the education plan was submitted, Desi took time and read, as well as MSBA took time and read. They came back and we had mini-conference calls with them. They also made a visit to the district to look at our current facility and how we needed to match different pieces with the plan. So it wasn't just, we wrote the plan and it was approved. This was a process.
Long. And then following that, which I think is really key, is that they had our next phase, once they approved the plan ahead, there's a person who works with the Special Education Department as part of the Department of Education. We wrote an eight-page description, basically, of all of the different programs that we offer in Wareham and how we do those programs and how that building will help us to distribute those programs equitably, creating the least restrictive environments possible, which we are, we struggle with now because of the space that we currently have. It's just tough to accommodate all of the needs. And so, we had another conversation after that letter was submitted, a follow-up conversation about why we had, we had the rooms that we had and what the purpose of those rooms were. And I think it was a very productive conversation with the Department of Ed. So it's been, it's been busy, but, and we've learned a ton because I don't think any of us, well, maybe with the exception of Kim, have ever been involved in this process before, so it's been very interesting.
Thank you. So I just want to say again, because it's so important that information about the new school, you know, to say again that there is a website that provides a lot of information. There is a Facebook page and that is updated often by the project manager. So, you know, whatever information anyone would like to get, just, I want to just direct you back to that website, to that Facebook page, to get that information and of course, to the community forums that I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting. So the next item on the agenda is a vote to have the assistant superintendent here with us at the table. It's something, obviously, she's here with us, something that the superintendent and I discussed over the summer and at this point, it's in order just to make it official and to have any discussion with other school committee members. We'll just have a vote tonight, but before we do that, if anyone has anything to add, this is.
So I, and I have absolutely nothing personal against the assistant superintendent. I think she does a wonderful job, but my question is why, I'm just asking why, because in my opinion, if, if we're going to add anyone, I would actually add the special ed director to have a spe, I know, you don't want to, but to have a special ed perception or a teacher, to have a teacher perception. I just don't understand why.
Well, do you want to speak to that or I can? I mean, for me, it just made sense because she had, to include her in conversations where she has so much to add to what we're speaking about. I think it's customary, from what I've seen in other districts, for assistant superintendents to sit at the table with the school committee.
I'm not aware of any, but okay.
Yeah, so for me, that, that's why.
Okay. The other thing too, I just want to add is that at any time, you know, she can come up and talk to us and add to our conversation, as can the principal and the business manager and the special ed director as well. So I don't know, I just find it just kind of, looking for the right word, but sort of isolating the other members. I mean, that they, that you've decided on one in particular or, I don't know. I'm sorry, that's just my opinion.
Well, certainly wasn't meant to leave anyone out. It's more of an addition to what we had and I, and, you know, Dr. Shaverhood and Dr. Schwam work together as a team and so it just made sense to me.
Well, I would, you're part of the team, aren't you guys?
Well, yes, I mean, that could extend, but she is the assistant to the superintendent, so that's why.
Do you have the survey?
I do.
My question would be to Dr. Schwab. What are your feelings on the matter?
I often will accommodate the requests of the superintendent and the chair of the school committee. I'm happy to be here and I'm also happy to be in the audience. It's not, it was, in every district that I've been in, there's always, there are always the central office personnel or the assistant superintendent are always up at the table all of the time. So I'm just glad that we're all on the same floor and that there's no longer presentations from the pit, you know, looking up into the sky, so. I'm, I'm good and I'm happy to support the superintendent at all times and I'm often, when the superintendent isn't here, I, I am and so we, which isn't often, mind you, but it's nice to have the backup, I think.
I surveyed, just because in my experience, the assistant superintendent is always sat at the table, but also other people have as well. So I, Michelle sent out a quick, on our list served, asked people. So what we found, three of the committees, or three of the superintendent districts that apply, that replied, one school committee had 20 school committee members and so they only had one person sitting at the table and that was the superintendent. The other two are small districts and did not have an assistant superintendent. Four districts had the superintendent and assistant superintendent. One had the superintendent and business manager. One had the superintendent and director of administrative services. Four had the superintendent, assistant superintendent, director of student service, business manager. And one of the four also included the tech director and another one included a parliamentarian, which I thought was kind of interesting. And then another one had everybody there plus a principal. So there's different configurations and, I mean, I certainly, we're not trying to isolate and if we had enough room, we would certainly welcome everyone and, you know, we could look at putting a table there and extend it to others. And they're just really thrilled.
But so right now, at this meeting, we'll take a vote on including the assistant superintendent at the table.
You need a motion? Yes, please. So moved.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
Abstained? So three, one, zero. Next on the agenda is the report of the director of student services.
I just need a second.
Okay, sure.
Uh-oh. I love caps on this one. There we go. So I was supposed to do this at a family situation, so I'm here tonight, so I apologize for that. I just want to take a minute to kind of recap what our goals were beginning last year. We had based our goals really on some parent surveys that we had sent out. Yes, like, oh.
There, is that better?
Yes.
I wanted to recap last year's goals, so we had, our goals last year were really driven by the result of the parent surveys that we had sent out. We didn't get a tremendous response and we're going to be sending those out again this year, hoping to get a wider range of responses, but we kind of used those to focus in on goals for student services. Some of our goals were focused training on team meetings for special ed regs and laws, both state and federal. Efforts to recruit, advertise and make accessible to all CPAC meetings, informative seminars, trainings for parents surrounding special education and related topics. Utilization of parent guardian and student input sheets to be filled out prior to and after IEP meetings to attempt to increase participation and get some feedback to help kind of drive improvement. And post-meeting surveys to collect additional data, engage success of our action steps. So some of the progress that we made this past year, we were able to utilize Legal Resource Publications, which has some amazing special education law-related training materials and we were able to use the IEP team trainer for all of our bi-weekly trainings. So we meet bi-weekly with all special ed department chairs and all team chairs at every level, preschool, all the way up to the high school and out of district. And we do trainings and discuss case law and trends, both in the state and across the country. We've also been able, we're just signed up for our second year of the Special Ed Summit, which is offered by Lyons and Rogers and they have two summits, they have a South and a North summit. So we have this year a couple people participating in the North, a couple people participating in the South summit, but we were able to get that money put into our grant under professional development for the specific group of employees to get training on regulations, policies and procedures. We were also able to get a subscription to the Special Ed newsletter and we use that for training purposes too. That's sent to us and we disperse and discuss articles that are relevant to things going on here in the district and get guidance from that. And then we also, as I said, have bi-weekly trainings with all the district team chairs and special ed department chairs. We were able to do a lot of work around CPAC this year. We have a long way to go. Our CPAC president has had some personal issues going on, so it's been a little tough to organize, but I think we're kind of back on track now. We have some new parents stepping up to kind of really help support moving this forward. We have set meetings with CPAC Executive Council so that we can set up the 2018-19 calendar, not only for meetings to discuss issues and get guidance, but also to set up resources and meetings and events for parents, grandparents and guardians and caregivers so that they know what kind of resources are available, both in the district and in the community, that might assist them with their children. We're adding a link on the Wareham Public Schools website for CPAC and the new CPAC website is under construction. And unfortunately, the person who was doing that for us happened to have a health issue, so we kind of keep hitting roadblocks, but we're getting there and we should be to the point where we'll be able to get that looked at by our tech director and tech department and then get that approved and up so that CPAC is able to have a better functioning website for parents to access. We have, we did a little trial of the parent pre and post-survey for IEP meetings and it, the feedback was good and so we did kind of a small sample. We're rolling it out now, again, October 1st because we're adding, tweaking it a little bit to kind of focus in on specific things that we've seen kind of as reoccurring issues throughout this past school year. So we want to get some kind of better, more focused feedback from our meetings. So those are going to start in the fall, so we're hoping, we're aiming for October 1st to start those at all meetings. And then we're going to look at re-tweaking and getting the new survey vetted to send out again to parents. We're going to try to do it in the fall and then again in the spring. So some additional progress, it's, it's been kind of a busy year and we've been trying to get a lot of things in place. We were able to have a registered behavior tech training certificate program offered for all of our therapeutic learning center, which is our social-emotional programs, paraprofessionals. So we were able to offer it to those paraprofessionals. Eight paraprofessionals participated in that program and out of the eight, six are seeking the actual certification. And then we also did an applied behavior analysis training for all of the paraprofessionals that are in our ASD programs and that was done by one of our collaboratives, our partner collaboratives. We were able to do training for all of our administrators by our special ed attorney who came in to talk to us specifically about the discipline of students with special needs and also his partner who came in and did a lot of going over bullying protocols with us and making sure that we were following all of those protocols with fidelity across the district. We've had specialized trainings and conferences offered to all of our service providers, our related service providers, and I funded all of that through our professional development grants. So it's given our speech and language, occupational therapy, physical therapy, nursing and guidance, social workers, psychologists, ability to go and find really focused training for their area of practice that's meaningful for them. We still continue with our McLean Hospital targeted training for our school nurses. We are, we had the really good fortune of being included in the Tower Grant, which is actually a CAPE grant, but because they had some extra room, they invited us to participate in it. So we have, at no cost to us, fully grant-funded participation in the All CAPE Day for teachers when we're doing pre-CAPE 5 on trauma-informed practices in school. And then we have our continued trainings for staff and So we have, at no cost to us, fully grant-funded participation in the All CAPE Day for teachers when we're doing pre-CAPE at five on trauma-informed practices in school. And then we have our continued trainings for staff and crisis prevention intervention. And we're trying to get as many people as we can trained in that. We are doing a lot of work around addressing the mental health crisis, not only in the community, but in the state. There's some pretty staggering statistics out right now about how many students and how many children in the state at much younger ages are being put into CBAD programs, which is Community-Based Acute Treatment Programs. In short, in the STAR programs, stabilization, I can't even remember what the STAR stands for, but STAR programs, which is another mental health, like residential program that lasts a couple weeks. We're seeing much younger students going into these programs and with much more frequency. So we're really kind of trying to really focus on our ongoing work with our therapeutic learning centers as far as supporting the program, consultation from outside specialists, trying to build our own capacity to service students more comprehensively and partnering with agencies in the community to try to bring in as much support as we can for our students and families. And then really having targeted trainings and professional development opportunities surrounding mental health crisis and trauma-based care. And really trying to get everybody as informed as possible so that we're able to really provide comprehensive support. So, out of district update, which I know everybody is always wondering about. So some good news, I think, this year. When I came, we had 68 students in out-of-district placements. So for the 2018-19 school year, we currently have 56 students. So we've, we've made a little bit of progress. Over this summer, we had many students who graduated or aged out of out-of-district placements. Not without a tremendous amount of support from both the schools and our school system. Some of them didn't graduate until August, and that's okay. We got them graduated. We have successfully transitioned back six students from out-of-district placements into our schools back here in the community. And the estimated savings on that is about $422,000 between tuition and transportation costs. In addition, we've had about $72,000 worth of savings from students that we've been able to step down from out-of-district placements that were either residential to a day-school placement or a more restrictive day-school placement to a less restrictive day-school placement in an effort to kind of start transitioning them back towards being back in our community. So those are exciting things. But as everybody knows, in our business, that doesn't mean that we won't have somebody move in or something else might happen. So we just have to kind of keep rolling. So as a result of being able to bring students back, we did need to add one staff. So we added a paraprofessional to our high school. And that is the only staff member that we had to hire in order to accommodate these six students that returned. But on the flip side of that, as a result of our savings, we were able to acquire some really good service providers. We used to contract out for BCBA services of board-certified behavior analysts. And it was a hefty cost to contract out. We were able to acquire now two positions. So one that specializes in our autism spectrum population and another one that is more trauma-based behavioral, BCBA. So those are going to be to support our programs across the district, consult and provide IEP services to our students. We've also been able to cut some costs by ending a contract with a contract service provider that provided us with occupational therapy, at, again, a very hefty cost, and add to our repertoire of service providers a certified occupational therapy assistant, which is currently located at the preschool at the Deacon's. So she's able to provide those services and kind of help us spread out services in a more cohesive way and equitable way for all of our buildings so that now we don't have the need to contract out for OT services anymore. We did the BCBAs. We've also kind of increased our repertoire of reading services. So we used to have Wilson, and it was like our go-to program for the district. And Wilson isn't always effective for every student. So we were able this year to take some of our professional development money from our program improvement grant and train staff in Lyndemood Bell and Orton Gillingham. So now we have three different reading programs that we can offer to students based on what their needs are and what areas they need to support them. So it just gives us a wider scope of services. We continue to work on data collection, research of best practices to strengthen our programming across the district. We're doing that all the time, visiting other programs, keeping a very close eye on our students who are out of district, looking at that programming and how we might be able to duplicate that here in district so that we're able to provide those services without having to send our students out into other schools. Preliminary goals for this year, I think it's still to train all the district team chairs and sped department chairs on Medicaid and Circuit Breaker. I think that Circuit Breaker and Medicaid are two areas that bring in a lot of money to the district if they're done properly. So I've been trying to reach a wider span of people in the district who understand it well and know how to maximize the amount of money that we receive. So I have been sending many different people who are special ed department chairs or team chairs to trainings for Medicaid and to trainings for Circuit Breaker so that we're making sure that when we're writing our IEPs and doing our Medicaid, we're able to really maximize the dollars that are returning to the district to support our programs. Also strengthen our continuity of services. Really looking at making our programs very fluid and making sure that they are equally supported across all of our buildings and that it's quality, comprehensive services for our students. Continue to work on a culture of transparency and trust with parents in the district in an effort to create positive outcomes for all students. And then CPAC is my big goal for this year. We really want to try to foster a CPAC that is collaborative and serves as not only a resource to the district, but also a resource to the parents in our district. That's it.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Mary. Yes, ma'am. Oop.
Sorry, though.
Oh, did you have a question? Oh, go ahead. You can go first.
I don't ask.
No, it's okay.
Um, so a couple things. Some of the parent surveys, I know we talked about that a lot.
Is there a mic on?
There was not.
Sorry. I hate these. You said there was not a tremendous response. Can you give, I mean, last year when we talked about this, the not tremendous response was literally like 13 surveys. So are we looking at the same thing?
So the second survey that we sent out, we had 27 responses. But again, we have 600-plus students in our district.
And is that how many surveys you're sending out?
Yes.
And getting 27 back?
Correct.
So like, a quarter percent?
Yeah. It's, it's abysmal. So I think we're going to try some different methods this year. We were doing it online. We were doing reminder phone calls. I'm almost feeling this year like maybe it's going to be more effective to do mailings or to send them home with students in their backpacks.
These are just going to special education?
Yeah. Yeah. So, you know, it is. And I know a lot of people came to me, I would say probably 20 people, came to me and said, "Well, they don't have access to a computer." Or their computer in their home might not be working. So there were some tech issues where people just did not have access to the technology that they needed in order to complete the survey. But I don't think that that is the only reason. And I'm sure that there are more than 20 that didn't come forward to tell me that they would like another mode of being able to participate in this. We had talked about possibly handing them out at meetings. But the problem with that is the responses are going to be not coming in in a solid format. They're just going to kind of be sparsely coming in a little bit at a time, which makes it a little bit harder to kind of aggregate data and like figure out where our areas of need are. So I think we're, we're going to try twofold. I think we're going to do the shootout email again. But I think also we're going to do paper copies this time to see if we can get a better response.
Okay. And that's, I'm sorry, remind me when those will go out?
So we're hoping to put them out like around the beginning of December. And then we would do it again like after April vacation.
So after December, like January, February meeting, you'd have, would you have another number to give us? So maybe how many more people responded?
Right.
Awesome. And then just one more. So one of the goals for this year was culture of transparency and trust with the parents for positive outcomes for all students. How?
It's, you know, it's an ongoing struggle. And now having a year under my belt here, you know, and hearing all of, you know, stories from what people have gone through over the years with different people and different superintendents and different directors, it's very hard. So I think I try to have kind of an open-door policy with parents. I try to be very available to parents when they have questions and need to talk about something. You know, you can't always make everybody happy because everybody is not going to get the answer or the outcome that they're hoping for. But I think being transparent about what our goals are and that our focus is on children and what they need to have the least restrictive environment is the most important thing. And I think that honesty and the open conversations with parents and advocates and everybody else that's involved, it's, it's slow, but I think we're getting there. It's going to take probably another couple of years. And there's going to be some people that have had such a sour experience that they may never trust. But I think that we've had a couple of instances of families that have had a really bad experience who see it turning. It's a slow turn and it's a wide turn, but I think we're, we're working and moving forward.
Recruiting parents who have had good outcomes for like CPAC, is that something that you do?
Actually, to be honest, my parents who have had some of the worst experiences are the ones that I would rather see come forward.
Okay.
Happy parents aren't going to give me the kind of input that I need. And it's great to get that feedback. It's wonderful to have people, you know, send me emails and say, "Thank you so much for what you did for my child. Thank you so much for this." What I want to know is where aren't we doing things right? How can we fix it? And have those conversations, because those are the meaningful conversations that move you forward.
And so that's one of your goals as well, is to move CPAC forward? So is that something else?
Yeah. I've already reached out to some of my parents who talk to me all the time. Not always because things are going great and tried to recruit them in. And I think I've got a couple that are, are willing to come aboard, so I'm hoping.
Awesome.
Because you don't want the, a happy crowd for CPAC is not going to move us forward. Not that we want people to not be happy, but, you know, people who have had issues, who, you know, want change, who want to help promote change, who believe that change can happen are the people that we need.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Mary?
So with the out-of-district, six students who have come back to district, what grades are they in and where did they end up?
So I have one at the high school. Nope, I lied, two at the high school. We had one come back to the middle school. One come back to Minnetonka. I'm trying to think when, I, I just did this all for, I did it for Joyce the other day. And I'd have to look at that, I honestly, like off the top of my head.
And did they end up going back to sub-separate inclusion, partial inclusion?
So I had one student that came back and was able to just go right into inclusion. All the other students were stepping down from 766 programs to our sub-separate programs. And knock on wood, I mean, it's every day checking in and it's, there's very complicated cases and very multifaceted cases. And a lot of transition work went into them. So it's a lot of really checking and organizing with building staff to make sure that everything is running smoothly. But knock on wood, so far, we've been able to kind of troubleshoot everything. Everything's been going really well. The children are over the moon happy. Like the ones that we have brought back are just excited to be here. And we're already seeing so much growth and so much excitement about being back in the community and participating in the things that go on here. And all the opportunities that Wareham has for them. And, and parents who, you know, are very nervous, but are so far very happy with the experience. So a lot of work.
Yes, it is. And also, speaking of a lot of work, the Circuit Breaker, trying to do in-district in meeting the foundation is a lot of work.
Yes.
And then another question I had was about the training for the Lyndemood Bell and the Orton Gillingham. How many staff do you think have been trained? And is it special ed solely or was Title I involved?
No. So I didn't, I, so I don't do Title I. That's not my purview.
Well, sometimes you collaborate and...
Right, right. I used my grant money for the special education grants to fund for my special education teachers. So we already have a pretty large group of Wilson-trained people. And some of them are moving on to higher levels of Wilson certification. So we're supporting that this year. But the other teachers, we have one, Lyndemood Bell. Because Lyndemood Bell is probably one of the most involved trainings. The longest training, the most comprehensive training. And honestly, a very costly training to go through. There's many pieces of it. So we have one teacher who had agreed to go through that process. And then we have, I believe, four who are going through the Orton Gillingham.
And that's a long process. I mean, that's a year process as well.
So they finished the first step of it. They're moving on to the second stage this year.
Okay. And I, actually, I think you do have some that are also currently Orton Gillingham in the district, already trained.
Yeah.
And just one thought, when you were talking about the CPAC. I know when I was involved in the CPAC, we had been talking about, we talked about doing some type of events such as like a book for bingo, bingo for books or something like that to try to encourage parents to come in. And if you ever get a chance to do something of that, maybe that'd be a good time to have surveys saying, you know, your ticket in is to do the survey or whatever.
That's a good idea.
Something like that.
Yeah.
Just a thought.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rebecca?
I was really impressed with your answer about, you know, wanting to hear from the worst cases. I, I think that's a phenomenal answer. I think we learn the most from those cases. And I just have tremendous respect for you, that you want to hear from these specific families and cases so that we can learn from them and try to better pave the path for, for those other families who, you know, maybe are having a social experience, but we could make it a great experience. Do you think additional training or more money allocated to, you know, CME and things like that would give us, give us even more people who understand Medicaid and might be able to bring in, you know, more funds for, for your department?
So I think we're, we're pretty, I mean, I've been hitting this pretty hard this past year. I think that I, I have kind of the key players. It's really important to have the people who are writing the IEPs in the buildings really be skilled with this. So my focus has been my team chairs and then kind of going out to the sped department heads at the middle school and high school because they're the ones kind of driving that forward. And because they're the ones kind of in charge of the paperwork piece of it, where, where we have to check boxes and know where services belong in a grid in order to get the most money, they're kind of my key people right now. So that's why my focus has been there. And I think, I feel like that's, that's a good starting point. And I feel like there really isn't much need to expand past that. You know, out-of-district, anybody who's really doing the major IEP writing and acting as our team chairs for the district are the ones that need to know these, these things. And they're the ones that are going to be able to, if they know how to effectively do it, will be able to bring in more funds to the district to support our programs. So that's why I chose that particular group of people. And it's also good because we've had, you know, our, one of our secretaries, Roe, Lindsay, retired last week. And that's tough because she was kind of this wealth of knowledge. So another effort, like a big effort for me, was to train as many people as possible to do all the things that just naturally she did over the past, you know, couple of decades. And so that was another important piece. Because I think there have to be a couple of different people who can step in to do things if somebody else can't for whatever reason. So that's my, my goal with Circuit Breaker, is to make sure that we have four people solidly trained on how to do it effectively so that anybody could step in and take that piece on if, God forbid, something happened to one of the other ones of us, right? So, again, knock on wood. I need like something to knock on.
Do, do you have a certain number of students that you're hoping even next year? Do you have like a goal for more that you could bring back in-district?
So bringing them back is a tough situation, right? Because we, we don't want to bring a student back to a situation where they're not going to be successful. So I think the biggest part of the out-of-district piece for me is really learning programs that I have not known in previous districts that I've been in. So like the CAPE programs that I have not been familiar with before. And some of the other placements that we utilize in Wareham that I didn't utilize in Boston or, you know, in other districts because they were too far away from where I was. So I'm kind of really trying to get in and learn and observe and see. I make sure that the money that we're spending is being used to support students in the way that we think they're being supported in that placement. So that's a lot of checking in. So I do drop-in visits and observations of our students in these placements. And, you know, sometimes we see great things. And sometimes we see things that make us think this is not the best place for the student. And then we have to figure out how do we transition, how do we support in a better way? So it's, it's a tough kind of dance. It's also tough because a lot of parents who have ended up in some of these placements have ended up there because of things that have gone wrong over the years. And some many, many years ago before any of us were here. You know, and so gaining that trust and being able to go through the process of... You know, and so gaining that trust and being able to go through the process of showing them what we have and what we do every day and what opportunities are available here and being able to show them data on how things have changed. And building those relationships is, it takes time. It takes time. So have I identified some programs that I think are not effective for our students? Absolutely. Am I trying to now start that process? Yes. You know, I would love to say I could bring back 10 people this year, but it's all, you know, you just never know. You just never know. So, you know, it's like every couple of months, we'll have somebody move in from another district. Or we'll find out that somebody's last known address was Wareham and now we are fiscally in charge of funding their placement. So this, this is like a once a month thing, sometimes more.
It's got to be tough. It sounds like it's a very fluid population that kind of.
It is. Yep. Yes, it is.
It seems like you're making really.
It changes on a daily basis. Yeah, it does. It's daily.
It seems like you're making really good headway. And I have to say thank you for the positive that you're bringing in.
Thank you.
Thanks. So before you go, I just want to go back to what I've said. I've said it to you a couple of times and it's worth saying again that the first time that you, that I remember you presenting to us, you talking about bringing back out of district students, that you, we wouldn't do that unless we could do it in a way that would, wouldn't take away from services that were being delivered to the students who are already in our district. And that I think is just so important and it goes to what, you know, what you were talking about. So I'm really happy to see that you were able to use the savings, some of the savings for extra staff that benefits all of our students.
Yep.
So thank you.
That's the goal. Thank you.
Yes. Oh, we're done with questions?
Nope. Go ahead, Emily.
When do you find out of district placements necessary?
That's an interesting question. So I think it's different, it's different with every child. So there's a lot of different factors that go into it. It's when I feel or when the team feels that we can no longer effectively service a child because the needs are so great. You know, I think good examples are we really don't have services for like, example, my son is deaf and hard of hearing. So he was always in an out of district placement because the district that I live in is very small and we couldn't afford to hire a teacher of the deaf and interpreters. So it was cheaper for the town that I live in to send him to a collaborative that specialized in that. So when we have cases like that where I know I don't have the services, whether it be nursing services or whether it be deaf and hard of hearing services, that's kind of when I make my decision that we need to look to somebody who specializes in that. And a lot of times it's, you know, it, part of it is what's cost effective? Like is it, is it more cost effective to utilize one of our collaboratives or is it more cost effective to bring the services here for that student? But in the long run, it's what the student needs and that's what drives us to decide what we're going to do.
And the mental health issue, and there's like a, like a spike in the, the, yeah. What do you think we're going to do about, like what is there to do?
You know, this is like a thing that is like nationwide right now because, you know, nobody can seem, everybody has theories of why we're seeing it, but nobody can really pinpoint. I think we have a difficult community, right? We have a very large population of foster students in our community. And a lot of times that comes with, you know, they have not had good experiences in their lives oftentimes. And so that kind of couples with some other things that, you know, make it difficult for them to be successful. So that I think is, is a roadblock. I think mental health in general across the country is, is difficult for us right now and hospitals, hospital programs that are pediatric programs for little ones cannot keep up with the volume of students that require hospitalization. So we've got a lot of students that are kind of sitting in hospital emergency rooms waiting for a bed somewhere and can't get it. And that's just precipitating the problem, making it worse. So kids, especially the younger kiddos, are not able to access the services because there's such an overload of people trying to get, get the services that the state can't keep up. And, you know, the providers can't keep up and the hospitals can't keep up and the placements can't keep up. So, you know, I think we just need to be very mindful about what we can do and getting as many services as placed, in place as we can here in Wareham, partnering with mental health services in our community, really learning about what's out there and how we can help parents and caregivers and guardians access those services. And looking kind of outside the box is what, what can they get through insurance? What can they get through the school system? What can we bring in to our schools to support? It's, it's just kind of, I don't think there is an answer, but I think we just have to kind of do our best to make sure that we try to stay ahead and make sure that we have all the services that our students need to be successful.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'm sorry, more?
Yes.
So out of the 56 that are out of district, what's the grade range? Is it younger or is it all?
It's all over the place. You know, I would say probably the largest concentration would be like the eighth, eighth grade to age 22 kind of age group. I would say that probably constitutes about 60% of those students. The rest range anywhere from first grade all the way up to seventh. It's kind of all over the place.
Do you see more of like an early intervention, those kids transitioning back in easier when there's an early intervention versus the eighth through?
Yes and no. Again, I think it's like an individual thing. You know, it depends on the disability. It depends on if interventions are going to be something that's going to change the outcome for that student. You know, there's some students that interventions are not going to change the outcome for. So I think focusing on the students that we think we can change outcomes for and provide opportunities for and support and making sure that our programs are actually being delivered with fidelity within the district so that we're able to successfully and confidently say, "We can bring you here and we can do what you need us to do to support you." And I think that's the balancing act of bringing, you know, being able to bring some money back into the district helps us build the programs, which then in turn helps us be able to bring more back because our programs then get more comprehensive and we have more supports built into them. So it's kind of like a, it's like a hamster wheel. Yep.
Any other questions?
I know. It's okay. No, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
So I'm here to talk about the summer programming that took place from the Wareham Public Schools' Office of Beyond School Time. Is that on?
It is.
Okay. As you can see, it was a hot summer. So our focus was on water for a lot of the classes. We sat with the Beyond School Time Kids Summer Club. It is a nine-week summer program. We started the day after the last day of school and went until August 24th, Monday through Friday, 6:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. We had 52 participants ranging from grades K to seven. And this is just a sampling of some of the field trips. We took advantage every Friday with the Highland Foundation Fund Free Friday trips. And then care, we always have a theme. So this year, in keeping with service, community service and service learning, which is our focus, we came up with sea because of our partnership with Buzzards Bay Coalition, which we'll get to. We wanted to keep the, the whole ocean sea thing going. So it stood for Service Empowers Achievement. So a typical care summer day. So our students arrive at 8:30, they're transported to the school, to the middle school. From 8:30 to 9:00, we congregate in the auditorium where it's very active for a half an hour of singing, dancing, and just getting excited and ready for the day. They're picked up by their teacher and from 9:00 to 11:30 is the first block of classes. Then we all go up to the cafeteria from 11:30 to 12:00 and have lunch. From 12:00 to 12:45, they have book clubs so we can focus on the summer reading books. From 12:45 to 2:30 is their last block of classes. Students are enrolled in six classes per week. So the way that works is Monday and Tuesday morning might be their robotics, Wednesday and Thursday could be their Operation Grand Pals class. And then every Monday, they have a different class afternoon, Tuesday afternoon, Wednesday and Thursday. So they get that opportunity to have six classes. And some of the samplings, we do robotics, Legos with math, unbeatable minds, Operation Grand Pals, chess, yoga, youth empowerment club, boost, science explorers, recyclable art, drama, musical theater, and so on. We had 17 groups, so you have, you have to have a lot of classes. So this is just a quick snapshot of some of the demographics. We had 240 students enrolled, enrolled in 144 hours of programming in grades K to seven. Forty-five students enrolled at Wareham High School Sail Program, that's what theirs is called. We had 35 students with, 35% students with disabilities, 65% students economically disadvantaged. Now this chart here is called a SEO dash T. SEO is a survey of academic youth outcomes that was created by DESI strictly for 21st CCLC programming. And we do a pre and a post survey in the summer. And then in the school year, we do a pre and post each session, both day school teachers that have those students that are in the after-school program as well as staff. And then the youth take a survey as well. 159 students were surveyed, 84 were males. I did make a mistake. This is supposed to be 75 females. We had an 88% attendance rate over the course of the six weeks and what we target is 85% or better. And we had 88%. So this is just a sampling of some of the outcomes that we measure. So we do, in the summertime, we did, we don't have homework, so that's blank. But some of the things we look at is self-regulation, leadership, perseverance, relationship with peers, and so on. Buzzards Bay Coalition. We have had a wonderful partnership with Buzzards Bay Coalition for over seven years. And this year, it became very exciting because we were able to become part of a pilot program where we were fortunate to have a group of students ranging in age between nine and 12, we had 12 of them, that were able to go over to Onset Beach for two weeks, all day. We transported them over there, we picked them up, brought them home, and they were able to learn to sail.
Kayak.
And swim. So between the Buzzards Bay Coalition and the YMCA did the swimming, the kayaking, and the sailing, Rhonda was from?
It was our boat, the Community Boat, provided the instructors.
And Rhonda's here because she is with the Buzzards Bay Coalition. Did you want to add anything to the pilot program?
I think so.
But what was so wonderful about this is that when the students came back, this age group, you know, there's drama with the girls or the boys, whatever. But when they went, there was not one complaint. They had the best time and it was hot. It was a hot summer. Some of them didn't want to get into a kayak, but they all were successful. And they would come back at 2:30 before we would transport them home and they were beat. They were exhausted. But they came back the next day. We did have one student who unfortunately couldn't do the second week because it was a family vacation. And he happened to be going sailing with the family and he actually helped them out with things that he had learned just in that first week. So it was a very nice partnership and we hope to continue it next summer. And we also partner with them during the school year too. A new one we had this summer was the Mass Audubon Society, Make Peace, and the Old Colony YMCA up at the Red Brook. So I was contacted by the Mass Audubon Society back in March that they had the funds that if we knew of two students that would benefit from going to this pilot camp that they did called Camp Clark, that they had the funds to have two children come for a week. And that was great. But then we, the conversation got going and we were talking about the type of summer programming we do and the partnerships that we've had in the past. And so the Mass Audubon Society, Jen Costa, wrote a grant to the United Way and received $5,000 in partnership with Make Peace. It's on their property. We were able to take two different groups and they each went for a week. And the little guys, first graders and second graders. And the two programs, one was called Bog Explorers and the other was Trail Trackers. So on the Bog Explorers, they would explore everything about the bog, who lives in the bog, above the bog. And then the Trail Trackers, they hiked, I mean, talk about exhausted, they hiked all around Deer Pond and Eagle Hill, if you're familiar with that area up there. It's a lot of hiking. So that again, was another, another really good partnership. Another partnership we started during the school year was the Operation Grand Pals class. And what that is, is between the Rosebrook All-American Assisted Living and our Wareham Council on Aging here, we were contacted by a company up in Sudbury that heard about a lot of the things we do with the elderly, particularly our grandparents raising grandkids and that kind of thing. And they wanted to get involved with our program and how we are connecting with our senior citizens. So the staff was trained. It's called Bridges. It's a curriculum strictly for focusing on bridging the gap between the intergenerational community. So this summer, what was wonderful is Operation Grand Pals, which happened to be the same group that went to Buzzards Bay, the Onset Beach for the two weeks. So these kids worked really, they did a great job this summer. So they sent out the invitations, they created the menu, they made centerpieces, they made the meal, they made like swag bags for the senior citizens to take home after they were done. And they provided, one of the students is an up-and-coming magician, so he did some entertaining for them. We had the musical theater come in and sing for them, which as you can see, this, this one over the left, she was very excited. They also went to the American Assisted Living facility over the summer too and, you know, just talking and learning about, we have one student who, one of our Egyptian students who was so excited because one of the senior citizens at the All-American, she is very familiar with Egypt, has spent a lot of time there, so she was able to have conversations. He still goes and visits her. So that, a nice connection. And the Wareham Council on Aging, our chess club would come over this summer and play chess, but it turned out that most of the seniors were more interested in cribbage. So now our students know cribbage, so now they're hooked on, on that, so. And a lot of off-site field experiences, you know, the Plymouth Airport. We did a lot of team building exercises for our students. Hiking, did a lot of hiking at Mile Standish. And then we utilized the library for our young kids. They went over for all the storytimes and the harvesting of the garden because we partner with them with the garden out there. The Cape Cod Canal Educational Center is another great partner. Our kids go there for two consecutive weeks and have hands-on learning about the canal, which, you know, a lot of, a lot of us don't know much about the canal and it's right And then of course, we end with our annual care fair. We have final performances, exhibitions, face painting, popcorn and snow cones. Again, it was hot, so we skipped the cotton candy machine because it would not have worked in the heat that we had that day. But all in all, it was a very good summer. So that's it.
Do you have any questions or?
I have a comment and that I can remember when this program first started and it has come a long way. You've done an amazing job, Jane.
Thank you. Thanks. Would you mind coming back maybe right before the end of the school year so we could really get more information out to the community so that they can be aware of everything that's about to be offered?
Before we start.
Yeah, before the summer starts.
Right. And actually, I pretty much determine, we know what the summer's going to look like usually by April because it all depends on funding because this is all grant funded and it's also collaborating with Title I, after-school, out-of-school time grants, mass grad grants. So it's not all just a 21st century grant, it's a combination of many grants. So once we know we're going to get them, then we know to what capacity we can create for our summer programs.
You guys are doing amazing things. I'm really impressed. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
I just want to say, Jane, I'm really, also really impressed. And the partnerships that you formed were really fortunate and, well, I shouldn't say were fortunate, you worked hard to make those partnerships happen. So, yeah, it's really exciting. Do any of those programs extend into the school year? Are those partnerships extend into the school year?
Yes. Buzzards Bay Coalition has partners with, partnered with us during the school year for the last seven years. So they come and they actually do onsite, they, they do the programming with the students along with our staff.
Oh, okay.
And they do it at all the sites. So they would be doing it this year, it will be at Middle and Deccus. At Minnetonka, but it'll be in the same building. And then the, the Mass Audubon, Jen, we're working on something. She's going to come in and do some classes with the students. She's going to come in and do some classes with the students, so we're going to continue that partnership. And I believe that they're probably going to continue that summer programming because it went so well up at the Camp Clark.
Okay. Do you have, are you able to accept all the students who want to be a part of the programs?
Yes.
Good.
We stretch the penny, we do what we have to do, and we try to get, you know. And the Beyond School Time Kids Club, that happens during the school year as well, which we are to capacity. And that also, they blend in when the care program starts during the school year. So it's very active, and we have a lot of kids, and that helps us to be able to, you know, bring in more staff with the funding that we can receive from the Beyond School Time.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Just before you, what Jane has also done is we employ junior counselors. And the junior counselors can bank their money and then use it for trips.
Right. Global aid. And another partnership I didn't mention, it's our second year, which is a wonderful thing, is Mass Maritime Academy. They reached out to us. We get, we can get as many cadets as we that apply for work-study. So they come and they work our after-school programs, but it's paid by Mass Maritime. So we have two cadets so far that have signed up. One actually started today over at the middle school. He was with us last year, he wanted to come back.
What a great resource, yeah. That's great.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next up is the budget timeline.
I don't think we all want to applaud after the budget.
I know. Now, now, budget is just as exciting.
It's going to be hard to keep up with the last two presentations. So not as exciting as special ed or.
I'm sorry. Trace. Is that better? Better? Yeah. So, being my first year, Kim and I worked together. We pretty much followed what we've done in the past years for budget timeline. I think there's a couple added meetings in here that we can talk about. Tonight, obviously, is the first one. We were looking to, you know, develop our budget goals and review our budget timeline with the school committee, get our marching orders of, you know, what's important, what we need to look for going into next year, what are our priorities? Is it class size? Is it services? So that's part of the reason we're here tonight to discuss. You can go through and see the different dates. I'm not going to read them out, each one. But we meet with the principals and directors, we ask for their budgets to be submitted, we meet with the budget subcommittee. I think what's new is the all-day budget workshop. No? That's not new? Did we add something? Why did I think we added something? The school committee budget workshop? Is that new?
That's new.
Okay. I knew there was something new.
We didn't do it last year.
There's the all-day budget workshop, where we spend the day together.
So what's the difference? Well, we had talked about having a school committee budget workshop that we didn't have last year.
And the difference between the two? So the all-day budget workshop is?
The all-day budget workshop is?
Yes.
No, that's where, well, go ahead.
That's where people will present their budgets to you. What we're hoping to have with the school committee budget workshop is when you get to get in and dive into the pieces of the budget and then start, you know, we need to start making some real solid decisions about where we're going to come in for the budget vote. So this will just give you a little bit more time to ask questions, to make some decisions about what you think should stay in the budget, what should be less in the budget, et cetera. A little bit more ownership for you.
Okay.
Because it's your budget, once we pass it to you.
Right.
We want you to own it.
And last year, the budget subcommittee met, but then this would include the whole school committee.
That's nice.
Well, it will involve you, like Kim said, you know, you'll be part of the building of the budget and the decisions that are made, and it will be very transparent. So we're all on board of what direction we're going together. And it just goes down the schedule, so there's the all-day workshop, there's the budget presentation to the school committee. The timeline is pretty much the same, unless you want the dates changed. The school committee budget workshop will be a fun, full day of budget. And then hopefully by December 20th, we have a vote for the budget by the school committee, and then we send our proposal over to the town administrator at the end of December. This process is all new to me. I used to have to do two budgets. So we would have a preliminary budget voted on the first, and then a final budget voted on June 1st. So I like this way much better, that we work together through the whole year to have one Any questions on it? Any changes or comments, something you'd like to see?
Just as a reminder, which school committee members are on the subcommittee?
Mike and myself. So we had talked about doing a workshop of our own school committee goals, and certainly the budget priorities would be part of that. So we could schedule a workshop sometime in November. Would that timing?
Yeah.
Would that timing work? In November?
Yes.
So that date isn't on here.
Okay.
But certainly, we can work on scheduling that date for this committee.
So we can add a budget subcommittee meeting?
Well, it wouldn't be the budget subcommittee, it would be a meeting of the whole school committee.
Oh, the whole school committee.
But it would be not a regular scheduled meeting. It would be a workshop meeting to discuss school committee goals and budget priorities.
Okay. So we'll schedule that.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else you'd like to see added or tweet? So we'll start rolling out FY '20.
Right. Right. The only thing I would say is I did go back and just look at some of the presentations from last year, looking at the priorities from last year. So if, you know, if, that's a good place to start, looking for this year.
It's a good idea.
Next, we met administratively and collaborated in this strictly preliminary of what we think are the important pieces that we need to look at for the fall with the free cash coming through. So at Deccus, we looked at repair in place of the sidewalk curbing. There's a generator replacement, which I know there's been questions regarding if Deccus isn't going to be longstanding. Do we need a generator replacement? The generator is movable, so we can, we looked into that. We can move it to different school if we need to, which we would, rather than it go to waste. But we still need to keep Deccus up and running, at least for the next two years. So the generator is needed. It's outdated, it's old, we can't get pots for it. So if we do lose power, there's not a whole lot of efficiency there to be sure that it's going to sustain the building until we have power back. So just, if people are wondering out there why we're putting a generator on there, that's why. Some HVAC repairs and replacement, just, I mean, to keep the heat in the cooling system going. Middle school, the same, we had the same problems, the middle and the high school, with the HVAC, with the heat at the beginning of the year. A lot of the chillers went down, so we're going to focus hopefully a lot on the HVAC and heating information in the schools, so we don't have what happened this year happen next year. We can keep the rooms cool. I know the students and the teachers enjoyed having the half-days. It worked out very well. We also need to replace window and roof repair at the middle school. We talked about replacing the carpet in the auditorium and in the main office at the middle school. We moved on to the high school. High school needs some furniture for three classrooms. They need some more textbooks in Spanish, French, and biology. Again, HVAC. The district-wide, we're going to continue our Chromebook replacements, which is an ongoing project, getting computers in the hands of the children and the students. So that's kind of a summary of what we'd like to spend the $400,000 on. It's very preliminary. I don't know if anybody has any other ideas or things that stick out with them that we've missed that we should focus on?
I have a question as to what classrooms at the high school are you looking to replace furniture? Or is it just in general?
Just in general.
Like the three worst at a time?
Yes. What Mr. Palladino has done, because it's 20 years old.
Right.
And the furniture is the same age. So he started the rotation now. So last year was the first year, he replaced three classrooms, and now we're ready to move on to the next.
No, that makes sense.
When he'll take it, and if it's usable, he'll move different pieces around to make sure that it's, we're not moving everything out.
I have one question about the textbooks. Are we using that many textbooks now with the Chromebooks?
Yes, somewhat. The, certainly the French and the biology need to be updated, and the, I'm sorry, the French and the Spanish, and the biology is older and it needs to be recycled. We're starting to take a hard look at the dates of our textbooks and put them on a recycle. And that's one of the questions that we're looking at, because I know at the middle school, we're looking at some books right now. Because of the Chromebooks, it's really lessened the need for some, but we still need to regenerate, like, literature books and that kind of material. So you're going to see textbooks or literature books, chapter books, other books, because we still want that book in the kid's hand.
Madam Chair, I would say to make a mental note that we definitely need to look at adding, replacing more furniture when we talk about our goals.
Okay. Okay. So one of the questions that actually Mike had when we saw this schedule was around the capital plan. So could you just speak a little bit to how this list aligns with the capital plan of the district?
Sure. Let's see if I can pull it up. Not that one. Is that the one we looked at, Kim?
Mm-hmm.
Or is it this one? So this is the capital plan that's been ongoing. Try to get the whole thing on the screen. It's separated by year. If you go to the far right, it tells you which year it was proposed that we work on. So within here, there's this section about what we're going to use the free cash for and what we're going to ask, actually get bonded funding from. So, you know, we worked on the buses, which is here, security we worked on, a lot of the stuff over here is replacement of the security system, desks. Again, you mentioned furniture, so the furniture is here. Compressor goes along with the HVAC and heat, repair replacement of furniture equipment and fixtures. It seems to be an ongoing pattern here within each building.
Well, it does. So that was my point, actually. I just wanted to point out, or for you to point out, that that list that you just presented us does follow along with the capital plan.
Yes, we're following along with that. Some things obviously get pushed based on priority out a year or so. So I don't know if all these years, or exactly the year it's going to happen. Like, we have on here, the furniture is an ongoing project. The HVAC is an ongoing thing. The Chromebooks is an ongoing thing for the technology. If, I mean, if you can go down the list, you can see a lot of it is just repair and replacement of building maintenance, just because I don't think we've put a whole lot of money in, back into our buildings, which is why we're heading for a brand-new school. So we're going to, you know, we're prioritizing what we need to do first, and we're going to try to start looking at, I've asked for the principals and administrators to kind of send forward what their urgent needs are, like, jeez, you know, we haven't done this in a really long time. Can we at least get it on the map? So that's kind of the direction we're going, but we are going to also follow this, because someone took the time to put this together, and it was meaningful. And, you know, if you read through, it's very similar. Textbooks, intercom systems, boiler.
Right. So that was just the point I wanted to make.
Yes.
Was that that list goes along with that, with the capital plan.
We are trying to follow the plan the best we can without those hidden surprises.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Anyone else have questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Susan.
You're welcome.
So next on the agenda is the vote on the cafeteria managers' contract. I'll turn it over to Dr. Shaverhood for that.
We met with the three cafeteria managers on the negotiations with Mrs. Bakayaki and Mrs. Pratt. We met with the managers, and we came up with the agreement. It's a three-year contract. It would be 3%, 3%, 3%. Also in here, we looked at the vacations and added two more weeks. We made some changes in the wording. And other than that, that is all the changes that were made in the committee. But the one thing that we're looking at doing would be to break this out, because there are three managers, and we will do an individual contract with each manager. The terms of the contract will be what's listed in the agreed-upon contract. The reason why we're looking at this is we will stay and grandfather this in, but should we have new managers come in, then we, as the school committee, the management, have an option to veer from the current contract. So if you choose to pass this this evening, each manager will receive an individual contract with everything that's listed in this current contract. It will be current for three years. At the end of three years, then we will renegotiate individually with the managers. The managers have also met, and they have approved their part of this. So now I would be asking for a vote of approval from the committee.
Does anyone have any questions or want to speak for the vote? No? Is there a motion to approve the contract?
So.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, 4-0-0.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is the acceptance of gifts.
I would recommend the acceptance of the following gifts. Two left-handed guitars, two guitar stands, one music stand, five guitar books, one amplifier and cord valued at $400 from Kerry Johnson to the Wareham Middle School. I would ask you to accept this generous gift.
Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, 4-0-0.
$2,445 from the Wareham Community Television to purchase Adobe K-12 school site license VIP for 12 months. This would be given to the district, and the intent is to renew this license annually. I would ask the committee to please approve this gift.
Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, 4-0-0.
Thank you. U.S. flags, POW and MIA flags to the district valued at $521 from the Friends of the Wareham Veterans Council Incorporated.
Is there a motion to approve?
So.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, 4-0-0.
Okay.
I'll move right into the report.
Okay. I would ask you to approve the following payroll. September 8th in the amount of $131,195.13. Payroll, September 15th, $835,008.60. Bill warrant, September 20th, $3,034.79. And $559,750.86. And $559,750.86. And 3,000, on the 27th, $3,085.48. And $307,720.70. I would ask you to please approve all those bill warrants and payroll.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, 4-0-0.
Okay. All right. So, information that I would like to share, we will be meeting with the Finance Committee on September 26 to talk about our two warrant articles that will be going to the town meeting. If anyone would like to join us, you're more than welcome to do that. On September 26, school council at Minnet at 4:00. On, and it's also at Deccus, correct, on the 25th, at?
24.
24.
The Deccus at 3:45.
3:45. On the 25th, school council at the high school at 7:00 a.m. We have received a letter from DESI, and they are looking to change the MTELL test, which is for teacher licensing. So, they have so generously offered to allow our teachers, some of our teachers, to take this, and so, some of our teachers will get to participate in the DESI program. And that will be upcoming soon. We've been working this past year with the partner from New Bedford Greater Workforce Committee. And throughout the year, they've been offering this small grants that we get to work with our students. Many of the students in the night school have been working with them, and we just received that they have invited us to join in a pilot program for career development and education. It's a grant for $3,000, and it will be looking at STEM-related activities. So, we're quite excited about joining in. It will focus at the high school, and the opportunities for our students will be career awareness, speakers, career exploration through job shadowing, or career immersion. So, we're very excited. We certainly appreciate the greater New Bedford workforce in keeping us connected, and we look forward to growing this partnership. And finally, MCAS will be released for reporters and the media on September 26, and on September 27, the media embargo is released, and the press will go out to all newspapers. And on the 28th, we will receive our MCAS printed reports, so they will be going home in the near future, and we're quite excited to have this released, because we're happy to share some good news. That completes my report.
Okay, thank you. Reports of the school committee? Are there any reports of the school committee? Is there any other business that was not anticipated?
I just have a question about a new position, the early elementary department chair of instruction and learning. What exactly is that position look like? What does it look like?
Is that the department head?
Says early elementary department chair of instruction and learning of Deccus School.
Yes, that's the person that oversees preschool and does the visits and the coordination.
So, what about the lead teacher there? There was a lead person.
That has been, there's not a lead teacher, that person has assumed that role.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Will take a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.